Open the meeting for Monday, March 27th. I'm going to take a motion to accept the agenda as may be amended.
So moved.
Do you see anything we need to do? No?
Oh.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
One of the minutes is you guys, I was not in attendance at that particular one.
March 20th, 3:30 PM, meeting.
Yep.
Contracts, make a motion to accept the minutes as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any other ones, the information?
The other ones are...
The minutes for March 6th, as may be amended. I did not see anything.
I didn't see anything, I read through that one.
Motion to approve March 6th.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, are there any select board member concerns that we're not already addressing?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, we have Patrick here, and those of you that are zoomed in, is there something you want to bring up that's not already on the agenda? Can you unmute yourself or raise a hand so that we know?
Steve Feiner, if I can speak?
Yep.
I have three quick things. One, has anything ever happened with the MOU with the Green Mountain National Forest in reference to Deer Sleep? That's one. Two, has anything happened with the lawyers to the Sherburne Corporation about the names being switched over? My third and final one is, I talked to a member of the fire department, and as of today, they have not received a copy of the town policy handbook that they're being told they're accountable to.
Well, I'm going to start with item three. As far as the personnel policy, it was about two and a half weeks ago when the chief had proposed his roster. And then we had the, here at the meeting and the issues that have come up. Until we adopt the actual roster, the person, we're not technically part of the town yet, and that was when everybody gets the personnel policy. Two, MOU for Deer Sleep, I'm not familiar with that situation. I heard that there was one at one time, I don't know the status of it at this time. And what was the other question?
It was the Green Mountain Forest.
Yeah, Green Mountain Forest.
Okay.
What was the other question?
Sherburne, the corporations as it pertains to...
Change of the name from Sherburne Corporation?
C.
Well, and once we adopt that, we will have the name then switched over to the town as part of the transition agreement. But we have to, the select board, once we adopt the roster and adopt the principles, the rules, which I hope to do on the 10th, the meeting on the 10th of April, we would then make that switch over.
We've already signed the agreement with that.
We signed the transfer, the transition agreement, but there's things that we have, items that we have to hit.
Why wouldn't they do that document at that time period if we were transitioning out of lawyers, why wouldn't they?
No, this is, the select board has to adopt the rules that we're up, that the fire department's operating under, that our lawyer has sent us.
Okay.
And I got to have the roster so that we've actually completed the transition.
This has nothing to do with the select board at this time?
That's correct.
This has to do with internal, between the town manager and the transfer of it?
Yes.
So can you please, when you have this stuff, just get it to the board?
Yes.
And he's hoping to have it for the meeting on the 10th. But right now, we can't do anything about it.
It has nothing to do with me at this time.
You okay, Stephen?
I'm a little confused. The, when I was, when I left Monday as my retirement, there was a document that we were told you were supposed to follow, and it was given as a directive from the chief, but the book was never handed over. So I'm hearing what Chet's saying is, the process isn't done yet.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's, it's still very much in transition is the issue.
Yeah, the chief, the chief was, put it out as a draft just so people would be aware of the document that was coming, it was not something that was supposed to be signed at that time.
Just to be clear, it didn't say draft on the document, but thank you, we'll keep moving.
Okay. Okay. Peggy, are you doing liquor control tonight? Thanks, Steve.
Is there anybody else on any select board member?
No one else has got a hand up.
Yes, I'm doing the board on liquor control.
I'll let you know. I'm outspoken enough, but...
Okay. Go ahead, Peggy.
Hello.
She doing the liquor control?
Yeah. Go ahead, Peggy.
So Peggy, when we start looking at this, what does the yellow line mean?
Well, I just grouped them together.
Okay, all right, usually the, so question, is everybody in compliance?
Yes.
Everybody's paid?
Everyone's paid.
Okay, so B&amp;J Ventures, outside consumption permit, first class, third class, otherwise known as?
Liquid Art.
Liquid Art. Sherburne Golf Service Company, well, we're going to step that one out because you're on there, right?
Well, I was told that we were being removed because we were going to change the setup.
We're working on that transition, but right now, in order to open the year, we're starting with the same thing.
Sherburne Golf Service Company, outdoor consumption permit, first class, third class. They're paid and everything?
Yes.
Then Huckleberry Holdings LLC, first class, third class, outside consumption permit, otherwise known as?
Mary Lou's.
Mary Lou's, make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with all of these.
What was that?
Make a motion for all three, with all three licenses for each, to be moved forward with the town clerk?
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I think the colors are just to designate three different organizations.
In the past, the...
Sometimes it's a color to show where they are in the standing, but I think this is just to designate each individual.
That's what she stated, so.
Okay.
Move forward with it, Peggy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peg. And you're going to present us with this public information meeting about the USDA application?
Yeah, the USDA application is for the loan, for the road part of the project for the Tiff District. It's basically that the requirements of the USDA application say that we have to let, notify the people via meeting and a public hearing that this is a form of financing that we intend to use. We're applying for all of the road portion of the project with them, and I don't remember the number, it's in 37 million or something like that, over the course, the entire length of the Tiff District. Basically, the advantage of the USDA, first of all, they can issue some grants, second of all, they will issue us whatever the lowest interest rate they can issue now. And as we move along, if the interest rates drop, they drop for us as well, and they don't go past...
Is this supposed to be a public hearing information meeting?
Yes.
Are we supposed to open a meeting?
Well, we can, yeah, we can make a motion.
Are we supposed to or not?
Yes.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
So I'm going to make a motion to open the USDA public hearing information meeting at 6:41?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, and Lisa, you have, Lisa has worked on this application. We are still in process with some of the pieces. And we are, on this, April 14th is the deadline for the application to be submitted. And tonight, we're having the public hearing.
She's unmuted herself, she might, oh, now she's muted again.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I just wanted to correct Chet that actually, the full amount that we're going for is just over $47 million.
Okay, I knew it was a seven.
And that's for all four phases.
Okay.
And just one more thing, we should also get a resolution at the end, authorizing submission of the application.
Is this a fixed rate?
It's a, it's a, it's a cap rate. It's fixed at the top, it can go down. And it is for the duration of the project.
So listening to this information, Lisa, it's a USDA loan. It will, as we're looking at it, as we are going for the full $47 million for the projects of everything going down, as we're looking at the other phases of the roadwork and the crosswalks and everything else, it gets us in for the loans to be approved, that were approved. And we don't need to borrow at all as we get the funds in from different places, where you've put in for a raised grant of $25 million. Fingers crossed, we'll hear sometime in August or September or whatever, and any of the other funds that come in. This is really a bridge loan at most because, like Chet has said, there's a cap rate that when you go in, you get X. And if the rate goes down during the time, it can get lower. Or as you get the other funds coming in from the other places, you knock the loan down or you don't use it. It's a bridge loan type of grant, of, not grant, but bridge line term of loan. I would just open it up to the public, and Patrick has his hands up.
Is it, oh, sorry, Patrick Cushing, is that with, with the bridge loan, what you're saying, is that an approved amount or is that the actual amount that's being taken out?
It's the approved amount.
Okay.
We can, you know, we can use it, like if we have, if the first phase is $10 million, we only take out the 10.
Right.
If we get grants, or if we got the raised grant, we're not going to take out $25 million of it. It's basically, it guarantees us financing for the entire duration of the project while we look for other funds, and our hope is to use much less.
Right, and it, but it's not coming out, going into a special fund, and then sitting there, it's, okay, cool.
No, it's money as you need it.
Awesome, thanks.
And it could be a year later where you get money to come in from somewhere else that pays that down, and then you have a 0% or a 2% or whatever.
Cool.
I'll see if anybody else has a question up there.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any other questions coming out of the Zoom.
I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a motion for a resolution for the town to move forward with the USDA loan application.
Second.
All in favor, there's no further discussion, right? All in favor, aye.
With nobody else asking anything, I'm going to close the USDA public information hearing meeting at 6:45.
Okay.
You get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor of closing the meeting? Aye. Update for the town hall?
Yeah, basically, just wanted to bring everybody up to speed. We're working on getting the closing documents together. We're probably a month away from being able to close on the building. There are leases with the post office and things like that that have to be transferred, so we're working on all the documentation to get, to get the closing done. We're also working on, we're talking to contractors with the availability to do a wall. And also getting ready, getting ready to start doing some of the layout work in the clerk's office and in the planning and zoning area. But fine. So at the end of the day, we're hoping that sometime in probably early May, we'll, we'll settle on this, and then we will get started with the construction with the hope of being in by the fall.
Do we have any contractors in mind?
Yeah, well, we've talked to DEW, and we've talked to Naylor and Breen. There are people that have done these types of projects.
And their availability is good?
Well, that's what we're, we're working on right now.
Part of that is giving them a set date.
Yep, they haven't, they haven't shut us down, they're saying, yeah, they're, they can work on it, and they think that they might be good, but we're just trying to confirm some details.
So we do have Kevin Brown that's working with Chris on this, I believe, for the town hall purchase?
Well, he worked with the, on the purchase and sale agreement, based on the tight schedule, because the original purchase and sale agreement had, was on, the settlement was on the 14th. And we're on a pretty tight schedule with a bunch of things that have to be done. We actually have to do some survey work because of some easements and things. So I did also send the information to Jeremy Farkas to see if he's able to do it in a quicker fashion. So I'm just waiting to see, I just actually got a list of questions back from him. So I just wanted to make sure we...
So with Jeremy asking you questions, I would guess that we're telling Kevin Brown that he's off of it, because if he's asking questions, he's moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the thought was that that would be where we would go. Typically, Kevin's plate is much, is full enough that we're not able to, I wouldn't, we would not be able to meet that schedule.
Okay, so we had Jeremy working on the closing for us.
That's correct.
Okay, and then Chris, you have an architect or whatever that's been looking at this or whatever?
Yeah, he's on my schedule to follow up with tomorrow.
Okay, and then Lucretia?
But he's, he's taken all the plans and put them in into, into the computer, so he's got everything in there right now.
And basically...
Existing, and then we can start doing layout.
Yeah, basically, we, you know, because I know Lucretia has worked on a list of all the things that she needs, and we've looked at some of the different items, and we want to kind of bring in the laundry list and let him start disseminating it, so...
I'll just time this week so I can connect with her and get that list of size of what she's...
Lucretia is away?
Lucretia's away starting Wednesday, so we're going to get it tomorrow. She was getting the list for me, she was going to send me an email today.
So Lucretia's away until when?
Two weeks from Wednesday.
Okay, can we get ahold of your, of the town's architect and work on that?
Yeah, just get her, get the stuff to...
No, let's get a meet, let's get a meeting together between whoever has to. You have a set of keys to the building now. One of the things that when I went to a senior citizens lunch, I believe it was Mr. Feiner had brought up the ice dams or whatever, if we could just make sure that we take a look at. Usually that means that the insulation is not right in the roof area or whatever.
And right, right in the front area, right over the doors.
So we could get an energy efficiency, whatever, to take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stephen, your hand is up?
Yeah, to, along with what Jeff, Jim just said, it's cold outside, it's warm outside. If there's any way possible to use the fire department's thermal imaging cameras to look and see where those leaks are happening, be an excellent opportunity to use those tools that we already own, and it would, it might help.
I would prefer, I would prefer us to hire on an energy efficiency person. Firemen fight fires, I don't know if they know what to do with, so you get the material. When you hire on an efficiency person, they're going to give you the recommendations based on theirs, and now is not the time to be doing that type of work. They like to get it where it's somewhere in like a 15 or 20 degree drop or whatever, and it's normally in the spring or in the fall. So let's get ready for that, but there's plenty of energy efficiencies out there.
Well, we did, we actually did one of those studies for town hall with a group a couple of years ago, where we actually shot the thermal...
I mean, I think it's a great idea, using our equipment that we have here, but we need the professional that can tell you what you need to do with it.
Where we're going to create the cold air space or whatever we're going to do with it. How they're going to do it.
But thank you, Steve.
Yep. Okay. Anything else on that?
No, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Golf financials?
Golf financials, you know, we're in the, in the winter, we're getting ready, geared up to get started in the spring.
Right.
And right now, you know, we still are in a very good place cash-wise. We have $448,000 in pro shop fund and $22,000 in restaurant. So you're not going to have to borrow any money for startup again this year, and...
You made $19 in the, in the restaurant?
Yeah, $19. That's usually somebody just, if some payment came late. But, you know, other than that, I mean, it's tracking, you know, about the same as it's been. We're running it at, you know, $25,000, $30,000 a month expense area, and, you know, all things are go for the spring. And our hope again is to have an early spring and get started.
I have a question on this here. I wanted to look on these expenses, and there is, I don't know if everybody is doing this, but other expenses, we're paying close to $20,000 a year in credit card fees. I know when I go to a couple of restaurants now and to some lodging places, and even the town, we say if you're going to use a credit card, that the fee is charged too. So...
And that is something that we can work out with the credit card company. Actually, when people pay their taxes in town, we, it does get a 2.8 something percent increase. So, you know, if that's something that the select board would like to investigate, we can have that as an add-on versus an expense.
I mean, how do you see it in your restaurants? I know some restaurants are charged or whatever.
I refuse to do it, I think that it's a cost of doing business, and I think it should be baked into your doing business that way. That's my personal opinion. I think that we're going to see vacationers coming here and throwing down a credit card and just whacking them 3% more.
Yeah, if you add the 3% to the cost of the thing, and you don't have the issue, so...
And I know they're not doing it at the wobbly either. They're not adding it.
No, they don't take cash.
Well, they don't take cash, but also when they give them a credit card, they don't add the 3% or 4% to it.
No, the resource... I just don't think it's, you know, people are getting away with it.
I think, I think the question more is, is what fee are we paying?
That can get you out.
Who are we using and what fee are we paying? Because there's a lot of difference, because there are some places that are a lot less than the 2.8 or 3%. When you're doing a million dollars worth of credit card charges throughout, you should be able to get something better than 3% or whatever.
Okay.
I think that's low, because we, that's the town rate that they add on. I'm thinking this might be more than that for the typical credit card.
I was doing 2% when I had the lodge.
You're about, it depends on what the nature of your business is.
Okay.
So it varies and also volume, but you could shop it too.
Yeah.
And it also could be tied into software too.
Right.
And so that could, you know, sometimes suffers less because you're doing the fees.
And have they had any success in getting information about some machinery that they've been trying to get in?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're still waiting the way we're waiting, and we have orders going in again, and, you know, it's just, there's one that hasn't come in in like the two years.
So they've received no new pieces?
There's no new pieces that have come in through the winter at this point.
Yeah, and Toro had said they wouldn't even quote them a price until they actually made it themselves.
Because they don't know what it's going to be, but you're also not obligated.
Has the town ordered the one machine for the lawn cutting or whatever?
It has not been ordered yet. It will be shortly, and it would, it wasn't, they told us it wasn't going to be in this summer anyway, so it'll be the next year. So, but I will, that's something we do have to work on. And we do have the money to do it, so we just got to order it.
And accept the town, the Mountain National Golf Course, comparative budget report for February?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And your town?
On the town side, on the, on the cash portion of where we are, we have basically $10.8 million in the fund, 2.8 million of which is restricted funds, 5.7 goes to the state.
That's on the...
That's on the treasurer's report.
We're on the budget report.
The budget report, you know, is, we haven't, we haven't had anything extraordinary other than we have seen an increase with, or we're ahead, way ahead with the municipal taxes. But again, that hasn't subtracted out all the state money at this point. We will be doing that this month.
I have a question.
Rental registrations are...
I have a question on page two. Fourth of July, we budget $3,000.
Yes.
Fireworks are costing us somewhere around $8,000 to $10,000?
This is revenue.
This is revenue, okay, so then we're on the expense side.
It would be in the rec section. Fourth of July is $13,350.
Okay, that's what we put in?
Yes.
Okay, doesn't the corporation of the fire department put in a certain amount of money?
They are, historically, they have contributed to the fireworks, they have not contributed to date. My understanding is that there was a vote to authorize $5,000 to be paid for this past summer, but I don't believe we received it yet at this time. But it is something we're looking into.
So who's in charge of the corporation, is it Ron Regir?
The president of the corporation is Dave Kopick.
Dave Kopick is still with us? I thought he...
Well, he's within the corporation, has sent me an email related to what monies need to be transferred between the corporation and its corporate.
So can we just follow up on that and ask where the $5,000 is?
Yes.
For last year?
Yeah.
And if they plan on doing it this year?
Yeah.
Wouldn't they be absorbed?
The corporation is separate and all the equipment that they did with the Fourth of July is actually owned by the corporation, not the town. That equipment was not transferred to the town. So they still have to...
So, so the corporation's still, is still going to be in existence?
It still exists, but it's not a fire department, and it's a different, and that's part of the, they're working with an attorney for the transition.
Like their auxiliary or...
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't completed their transition yet to the new whatever entity.
It's not, that's not the town side, the town side is just asking, where's the $5,000 from last year for the Fourth of July fire?
Okay.
Works.
And treasurer's report for the two?
Yeah, basically, the point I was making with the treasurer's report is we're over $2 million to the good on the cash side. We're collecting our taxes to date, and we've also had enough money that we were able to put the $6 million into a CD for three months that we'll be able to earn $60,000 on, which is basically the money that we will be paying to the state of Vermont, and we will be able to earn interest on it until the end of May. So before we make our payment, so we will see some additional revenue there that we haven't had in the past. But our cash flow position has been very good, and, you know, at this time, I don't, I haven't seen anything, you know, extraordinary to discuss at this point. We will be talking about some of the projects that are coming up this summer over the next month or so, because I was just actually negotiating with our, with the paving contractor for the work that we were going to finish last year on East Mountain Road that we didn't do in one other road. So we'll be, I'm waiting for that final price, and then we will get that going. We are going to be doing our own line striping this year as we are purchasing a piece of equipment with a contractor who's going to manage that. And then also, we're working on the guardrail work, and we have basically completed, with the exception of the spring restoration, the Archie Baker Road Bridge.
Make a motion to accept the town of Killington's comparative budget report for February, it should say 2023.
Oh, it says 22.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Second.
Do we need anything else? Okay, all in favor of accepting, please say aye.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as of February 28, 2023.
Second.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of accepting treasurer's report, please say aye.
Aye.
I have one question on the paving. Are we still restricted in what material we can use? Because it was like a, no, there was one material that didn't last as long.
From a paving perspective?
You were talking about the paint.
Painting, did I say paving? I meant painting.
Yeah, painting.
I meant painting, I'm sorry.
No, we are still required to use latex-based paint.
Latex, okay.
I noticed, I was traveling throughout the state and the last week, it is, it's a problem.
Yeah, New York uses...
So, so when you talk...
New York uses the solvent-based payout.
When you talk to Cory, who is doing the crosswalks and the stop signs, and now he's going to take on the lines, the issue that you have is if you don't get two coats on and get it built up for a while, you're going to lose it. And sometimes we, like last year, we got it done in November on a 27-degree day. So that was useless, okay? We did not pay for it, we did call, they are not billing us. And, you know, we, you start looking at some of the crosswalks and some of the stop signs, they're looking a little better than they have in the past because they're holding up. So it might take another two years of have to doing twice a year. And then Cory's going to have to step it up onto a paint once you get to, because when you get it to whatever, you know, you don't want it to be slippery, so then there's a little grit or something else that will have to go.
They actually put glass beads in it, actually.
No, there's something...
Oh, he's doing the other one?
Glass beads is for shining at night or whatever. So there's something else, like a slip-proof whatever paint or whatever. But that's the biggest problem that we have with our white lines and our yellow lines is that we don't get it done. And it's, sometimes it's done once a year, and it's done in November or December.
And it, the road does take a substantial beating too, so...
Good. Okay. May I just report?
Yeah, the LHMP, which is the local hazard mitigation plan, it was a, the board adopted it, I believe, two months ago. We got the final approval from FEMA that it's been accepted, so that project has been completed. accepted, so that project has been completed. Um, also, the RFP for the reappraisal for this year is going out tomorrow. It's completed, and we have a May first deadline for receiving bids, and if all goes well with this RFP, and we put a deadline of April first of twenty twenty-four for completion, um, we would have that done in the next year. So that will be going out tomorrow. And the other thing is, uh, looking at, you know, the grader was scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-five. Um, in my conversations with Caterpillar, we're looking almost a year and a half out for ordering them. Um, they are willing to fix a price now if we order it, uh, and the prices have gone up dramatically. Uh, it's about four hundred and twenty-five thousand, although they're gonna give us a hundred and forty thousand for the one we have. And looking at that financing, it's another one of the orders that we would make that would say, we're ordering it, and we're not gonna buy it if the interest rates go up, we're not gonna buy it if the price goes up, we're not gonna buy it, you know, if all these things happen, but to get our name on a list, it's time to-
What were we budgeting originally for?
It was originally, we were gonna have a net of two fifty, and I think the net is more like three forty, three fifty. So it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be an extra ten thousand years.
How many hours are on the one we have right now?
Number of hours, no. I don't, I can't answer that question. I know, we're, we're at, it's, uh, two thousand ten-
What's the condition of it?
It's in good condition, but we're starting to spend money on it. And the question is, do, you know, we had a plan for replacement of twelve years, um, well, actually thirteen years, and just looking at, you know, should we get in there, because the prices are going through the roof. I mean, they told us that the same, the same unit we're getting, if you don't have it in the municipal program, you might pay close to seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So you just told us that they're willing to give us a price to lock it in now?
Right, for, for year.
And you're willing to give us a hundred and forty thousand dollars for our current one.
Yes.
And then you said, we're okay as long as interest rates don't go up, as long as they don't raise the price, but if they're giving us four twenty-five, they're not raising the price.
No, the price is gonna stay where it is. I'm just saying, if we didn't get it in the place, we might have a increase.
And the hundred and forty thousand dollars is based on them knowing that we're going to have this machine for another year and a half?
Yes. They, what they said is actually Caterpillar's not locking it in, Milton Cat is, and they're saying, we will promise you a hundred and forty thousand for this and the four twenty-five. We're gonna hold the price-
No matter what, I mean-
No matter what Caterpillar does.
Okay, so what do you need from us? It's our-
I'm, it's an informational thing that I said, you know, unless I had an objection, I was gonna get our name on the list.
Mm-hmm. I'll just make a motion for the town manager to move forward as stated for the great, the great approaches.
Yeah. Second. I'm in favor, aye. Okay. Uh, Patrick, and anybody that zoomed in, is there anything that you wanted to bring up that we have not gone over tonight? Please, uh, raise your hand or unmute yourself. You okay?
I'm all good.
Okay. And I'm not seeing anything there. Uh, is there other business?
I'm gonna make a motion to go on executive session for legal and personnel- at, um, seven oh five.
Okay.
Wow.
Second?
Yeah, second. No, I was like, wow, seven oh-